Good morning, everybody. Adrian Garcia, County Commissioner of Precinct Two, joined with Commissioner Leslie Briones of Precinct Four. And so, we're here just to discuss the upcoming conversation on the budget, and just to reiterate that, number one, experience matters. Been through tough budget decisions when I was a councilmember, been through it when I was the county sheriff, and with smart partners, mature partners, I know we can get it done without any increase to taxes. Fundamentally, core essential services are not being cut. Roadwork, infrastructure is not going to be negatively impacted. Parks will continue to be mowed and maintained. No cuts to library hours, no cuts to clinical health services, something that's absolutely important to me. Absolutely, state cuts, tariffs, Trump administration reductions have been challenging, but despite those challenges, our work to make available more affordable housing will not be cut. ARPA programs, early childhood apprenticeship, still operational through next year as always intended. Smart uses of money, for example, pollution control investments of $195,000 will be made into their lab, which will allow us to cut $400,000 in contracts to outside lab services. Switching $800,000, $860,000 to be exact, of clinical services, clinical service expenses, to an existing state revenue fund, so we'll let someone else carry the tab. And then, we will also take a look at all elements where cost savings are available and are now a more efficient and effective way to run the county. This is absolutely, as I mentioned earlier, where experience matters. Collaboration and building coalitions matters. This is how you govern. You work together, you sit at the table together, you roll your sleeves up together, and you make decisions together. Others may come to work and expect to get their way on their priorities, but aren't ready to do the work. This has been a process that has required a lot of work from my office and partners such as Commissioner Briones, so that we, over the course of the last eight months, not last few weeks, but eight months, have been working through this and doing that and more. We didn't just expect others to fall in line. That's not how governing works. We don't always get our way, I don't always get my way. However, it takes maturity and willingness to find compromise to get things done. Working in the middle is the best place to get things done. In spite of deficit challenges, we're still able to expand HART to countywide. In Precinct Two, this means that an area that needs HART, for example, like Cloverleaf, will now start to receive those services that will allow deputies to focus on the more violent and more serious events, while HART employees will be able to take care of the nonviolent type of incidents. This will free up our law enforcement to take care of us, to keep us safe, and very proud of the work that they are doing. So that's when collaboration is at the forefront, and this is how work and things get done and decisions together are made as a collaborative, as a coalition, as partners in government. And so, now, I'm excited to introduce Commissioner Leslie Briones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, for your partnership, and thank you to all of the county departments, especially our Director of our Budget, Daniel Ramos, for the months of hard work that has gone in as we prepare our fiscal year 2026 budget. The way I think of it, this is smart, strategic budgeting. We all know we have a deficit, and what we have done is lean in to being solutions-oriented, finding ways we could do more with less, finding those savings. Some would like you to believe that the sky is falling, there will be devastating cuts in this dystopian universe. False. On the contrary. Again, because rolling up the sleeves and doing the hard work, we have identified key areas where we can continue delivering key priority core county services, but do it more effectively and efficiently. I have many priorities. Public safety is my top priority, and that's why I have been very proud to support the pay parity for our law enforcement officers, for our sheriff deputies and all ranks, as well as our eight constables and all of their deputies. Because we know that with the city of Houston, raising law enforcement officers pay 36.5%, we are losing our officers because they can get paid more in another agency. Not on our watch, because it's affecting all of our safety. We want to make sure we have the deputies staying here in Harris County to respond to calls for you and your families. We also want to make sure we're being as smart and strategic about public safety. HART is something Commissioner Garcia just mentioned, and I feel deeply passionate about. We brought it in-house and were able to identify savings so that it was budget-neutral to expand it from just two districts to countywide. What this does is if someone calls 911 in a state of crisis, addiction, they're connected to someone trained in mental health. That is a win for that person who can get connected to services, mental health counseling, employment, housing, et cetera, and it's a win for our law enforcement because they can double down on violent crime and responding more quickly. We have also been laser-focused, in addition to public safety, on public infrastructure, which is a fundamental responsibility Harris County must deliver to you and your families. Whether it is our flood mitigation capital projects, our flood maintenance, building sidewalks, increasing efficiencies in how we clean the ditches so that your homes are better protected during the next flood or hurricane, the way we are helping to expand access to green space for your physical health, mental health, and for our environment. As Commissioner Garcia said, make sure you are listening to the actual facts. All of our parks will continue as usual, which I believe Harris County delivers an excellent level of service for parks. Our community centers continue as usual. Public health, our infrastructure, and our numerous county departments. In terms of public health, I have many priorities. As a former teacher, we know, right? We need to make sure our kids and our families are healthy and that we're not only treating the symptoms, but more importantly, the prevention. So whether that is our community mobile clinics that will absolutely be preserved and continue serving, immunizations, we administer approximately 55,000 immunizations a year. All of that will continue. And then disaster readiness. I know we're all tracking storms on our phones, and with the devastating cuts that Trump has made to FEMA, the National Weather Service, and NOAA, Harris County is doubling down because we are your first responders and front line of defense. So rest assured that by putting in the months of hard work, working closely with departments, finding strategic ways to reallocate, reinvest, use a different funding source, we have been able to close that gap. I'll give you some examples. And again, I take this very seriously, and to Commissioner Garcia's point. To me, raising taxes is a last, last resort. We have to put in the work to see what we can do to be more strategic and more effective with what we have. I grew up check to check. I never wanted for anything, but I remember what it was like when you were just waiting for that next paycheck. So again, it is up to us, as your elected officials, to make sure that we're being smart and strategic. So let me just give you a couple of examples. Technology, making sure we're purchasing it through our universal services, our IT department, rather than different departments purchasing. We get better pricing, and that creates savings, close the gap. In terms of landlines, switching them onto one service, savings. We have had vacancies that have been open and vacant for hundreds of days. These are positions that there has not been any urgency to fill, and they've been open hundreds of days. Again, we're not cutting any folks that are here, we're not making any freezes, but these are positions that aren't needed. Again, finding those efficiencies and where we can reallocate. And there's various other examples that you'll hear about today as to, again, smart, strategic budgeting. So in sum, we take our roles as your fiduciaries. Every taxpayer dollar, we take it really seriously. And I'm always looking for these "both and" solutions and these "both and" investments because that's what our families deserve, that you have hard-working people serving you, listening to you. And thank you to all of you who came to our budget town halls and listening sessions, took our survey. We are listening, and we will do the work to make sure that we are honoring what you prioritize. And rest assured, Harris County, we will continue to be strong, resilient, and continue the progress that we are making together. So again, Commissioner Garcia, thank you so much. Thank you to our Budget Director, Daniel Ramos, and to all of our teams who, again, for months, have spent countless hours doing the hard work. Thank you.
I'll just say a brief word in Spanish for Spanish media. Estamos aquí solamente para hablar del presupuesto en cual estamos trabajando. Ese es un labor en cual la comisionada Briones, su servidor y otros hemos trabajado alrededor de ocho meses, casi un año, haciendo decisiones, viendo lugares en donde podemos encontrar eficencias y donde podemos ahorrar dinero y pues cambiar quién paga ciertos servicios. Eso es lo que estamos haciendo con nuestro Departamento de Control de Contaminaciones, nuestro Departamento de Salud. Pero ese es un trabajo en cual hemos estuvido trabajando nuestras oficinas, la comisionada Briones y yo, mi equipo, hemos trabajado viendo los detalles, estudiando cómo podemos encontrar modos de ahorrar dinero sin aumentar los impuestos de propiedad. Como dijo la comisionada, algunos te quieren hacer pensar que a mejor todo es un desastre, todo va mal, pero la merda verdad, cuando uno es maduro, llega a trabajar con sus colegas, llegan a lavantar las mangas y trabajar en la mesa como un equipo, buenas decisiones se pueden lograr. Y eso es lo que yo y ella estamos listos para hacer hoy en día, protegiendo la seguridad pública. Eso es una prioridad sumamente importante para los dos, pero la comisionada Briones ha sido un campeona a través de mantener la seguridad pública. Entonces, estamos para no más hacerles recordar que experiencia llega a tener mucha razón. La comisionada Briones antes fue jefe de operaciones de una empresa. Esa es una experiencia que nos está sirviendo aquí en el Condado. Yo cuando era concejal tuve que hacer decisiones difíciles. Cuando era el Aguacil tuvo que hacer decisiones difíciles porque en esos años el presupuesto no era lo que uno esperaba. Pero seguimos manteniendo servicios, seguimos trabajando, cuidando la comunidad. Entonces, esa experiencia ambos lo estamos trayendo a esta mesa y vamos a seguir adelante sin aumentar los impuestos a la comunidad. Ahora, el dinero que se ha usado para, que se dice ARPA, ese dinero y los programas en cuales ese dinero está programado al momento va a seguir hasta el año que viene, como siempre se había decidido. Nada ahorita está acortado. Los servicios del Condado no van a tener mayor impactos con este nuevo presupuesto. Las librerías van a seguir operando, los parques van a seguir siendo mantenidos. Entonces, este Departamento de Salud va a seguir haciendo su trabajo. Todas las cosas, las cuales son una prioridad para mi colega y yo, vamos a hacer esas decisiones como un equipo maduros, inteligentes, y usando nuestra experiencia. Gracias.
Questions?
The judge's office mentioned some of the cuts that the county commissioners will have to look at involve public libraries, doing diversion programs, and services. Are any of those services impacted? I know you all focused on law enforcement and public health issues.
Obviously, I think you asked the question right. We're looking at everything. Now, looking at it doesn't mean that it's going to get cut. No. We're using our experience, we're going to make smart, strategic decisions. And library hours, as I mentioned earlier, are not being cut. That's something that you've seen other governments do. We're not doing it. Parks sometimes get put to the wayside. That's, you know, that is something that is a pride and joy to both of us. That's not going to be happening. Parks will continue to be maintained. So, we're looking at everything. That's what we've been doing for the last eight months. And working together, rolling our sleeves up. But I think today, we'll be able to give the Budget Director good guidance on how to close that budget, how to find efficiencies, and how to get a balanced budget done. Commissioner?
Yes, and I'd like to add to that. There has been substantial amount of misinformation. So what is true is that we asked all Harris County budgets to present a 90% budget. Them, as experts of each of their departments, to find these efficiencies, whether it's the way they buy computers, whether it's landline to the centralized phone subscription, those sorts of vacancies that have been open hundreds of days that they just don't need that position anymore because we've streamlined work. And so, each department in the driver's seat has been able to suggest where they could use money more wisely and where they could be more strategic. Smart budgeting, again. And so, this is not, and again, this is where there's been a lot of misinformation. This is not a unilateral, absolute 10% cut. False. What it is, is a menu of options and opportunities to be more efficient with your tax dollars that have been suggested by each department. But again, I want to reiterate that no core services on my watch will be cut. On the contrary, we will put in countless hours, as we already have, and will continue to do, to again, find those efficiencies. And so, please, we ask the community, we so appreciate y'all's interest in this and partnership and feedback, but know that no core services will be cut, and they will all continue.
Can you talk a little bit about law enforcement raises? I know deputies want more money, and they posted their proposal. Constables are asking for more money. Where would that come from, and just where do you think that everybody stands with that going into that?
Look, we're committed, absolutely committed. As Commissioner Briones mentioned earlier, HPD changed the market on us, and we got to meet that market. And so, we have a plan. When we understood what was about to happen, what was the potential of deputies and deputy constables, deputy sheriffs and deputy constables making critical decisions for their families and for themselves, who's to blame them, number one? And, but as we looked at this, I know through the work of a former chief operations officer, my experience as a former sheriff and as a former councilmember, I knew immediately where there was potential to save and reinvest that money strategically into those salaries. And I'm proud of the Harris County Deputies Organization because they have sat with us and worked through these details, and we, I think, have come up with a very, very reasonable plan that takes care of law enforcement in Harris County, helps to keep them stable, and helps to keep our unincorporated areas of the county well protected.
Voy a tratar. Bueno, buenos dias a todos. Soy Leslie Briones, y primeramente quiero dar las gracias al comisionado Adrián García del Precinto Dos. Y estamos aquí, y hoy mismo vamos a tener otra discusión sobre el presupuesto del Condado Jerez. Queremos compartir la verdad. Vamos a continuar con todos los servicios que el condado ofrece a ustedes cada día. No va a haber cortes dramáticos, el cielo no está cayendo, jamás. Durante el tiempo que nosotros estamos aquí, estamos haciendo el trabajo duro para encontrar unas maneras para ahorrar dinero, para encontrar eficencias para ustedes. Estamos invirtiendo y bien enfocados en la seguridad y la infraestructura y la salud pública, que son responsabilidades del condado fundamentales. No va a haber cortes así, todo va a continuar. Vamos a mejorar los salarios de nuestras fuerzas de orden, todo el equipo del Aguacil y también de los constables porque la policía de Houston ha aumentado el salario, y no queremos que nuestras fuerzas de orden, del Aguacil o constables, que se vayan porque tienen que proteger a ustedes y sus familias en el área unincorporado del Condado Jerez. Vamos a continuar con los espacios verdes y los centros comunitarios, también de la salud pública, todas las clínicas móviles van a continuar. Así que, los datos y la información correcta, sí vamos a tomar decisiones difíciles, pero nosotros no queremos aumentar o subir sus impuestos. Yo crecí en una familia que vivimos cheque a cheque, y yo sé que muchas familias están surfiendo con esta economía. Así que jamás, antes de hacer el trabajo difícil de encontrar estas eficencias. Pero vamos a continuar con el apoyo de la comunidad, vamos a ser como colegas estas decisiones. El Condado Jerez está en una condición bien, y vamos a continuar así porque eso es lo que ustedes y sus familias merecen. Así que muchísimas gracias, y agradecemos todos que vinieron a nuestros centros comunitarios para hacer el Budget Town Hall. Muchísimas gracias.
Can you talk about how challenging it has been, I guess, to try to work with the county judge and other commissioners to try to get on track and try to get the budget all balanced and approved? Or talk about some of the challenges you all have faced?
I will, I'll just say that the biggest challenge is misinformation. And the biggest frustration I personally have had, can't speak for anyone else, is to create a concern, a false narrative, that services were being cut, that that decision had already been made. As Commissioner Briones laid out, we asked our department directors, and I want to give thanks to every single one of them because they made tough decisions. And they met the challenge. They gave us a budget that would cut 10% off their line, but they maintained services. They were able to maintain near-optimum services. And that's what you do through this process. So, the biggest frustration for me is, one, a bit of misinformation, and secondly, the just outright false narrative that property taxes were going to be raised and that services are being cut. That's been the biggest frustration. So I need your help to get that message out, that today, the work is being done.
And I'll add, so, I'm a lawyer, and I used to be one of your civil court judges. Facts matter deeply to me. Credible evidence matters deeply to me. Show your math, show your work. Put in the time and effort to actually dig and find these strategic, smart ways to do more with less. So I want conversations based on facts, not drama or hysteria. And so, again, as one of your commissioners, I'm honored to be able to be here and put in the time and effort to make sure that we're stretching your taxpayer dollars, making hard decisions, but in a way that continues the core services and in a way that's more strategic and effective for you.
With the services, you know, the 10%, are there going to be any cuts to employees, to county?
No, no proposed layoffs. And that's the beauty... Y esa es la belleza de trabajar juntos durante ocho meses. Que puedes encontrar esas deficiencias y nuestro compromiso siempre ha sido cuidar a nuestros empleados, ya sea de la ley o de los empleados civiles, en cualquier área de operación. Pero donde encontramos un gran número de oportunidades fueron posiciones financiadas que no habían sido llenas durante meses. Y así, eso nos comunicó que esa posición ha estado vacía. Tal vez podamos ahorrar esos dólares de salario. Así que estamos cuidando a nuestros empleados, estamos cuidando al público, estamos manteniendo nuestros servicios centrales sin ser negativamente afectados y estamos manteniendo el condado avanzando.
¿O algunas de esas departamentos que se supone que van a ser cortadas, la mala información de la que hablas, ¿estaban hablando con ustedes diciendo, hey, qué está pasando?
No.
¿Nada de eso?
Yo simplemente te diré que durante ocho meses ha habido varias conversaciones. Ese es el trabajo que estamos hablando. Nosotros, los directores sabían de lo que estábamos enfrentando. Y trabajaron con nosotros. Cada parte del gobierno del condado, comisionados y directores, director de presupuestos, todos sentados juntos, mirando los datos, mirando las líneas, viendo dónde hay deficiencias, dónde hay oportunidad, la eficiencia de la tecnología que el comisionado Briones mencionó. Todas esas cosas, todos esos detalles que estaban siendo trabajados y discutidos durante ocho meses. No durante los últimos días. Nadie se despertó, al menos nosotros no despertamos ayer, y dijeron, oh, Dios mío, ¿qué vamos a hacer? Ha habido mucho trabajo puesto en esto.
Sí, este es un proceso de multi-months que es altamente colaborativo. Y los departamentos se encuentran con el oficio presupuestal. Subvenen sus propias ideas propuestas. Habrá audiencias presupuestales de departamento que están abiertas al público, que te invitamos a. Así que, nuevamente, se encuentran con todos los oficios. Esto es altamente iterativo, altamente colaborativo. Y nuevamente, quiero agradecer al director Daniel Ramos y su equipo porque realmente han creado un proceso intenso, robusto, transparente que ahora incluye ahora town halls de comunidad sobre el presupuesto que no teníamos hasta 2023. Y nuevamente, queremos la input del público sobre tus prioridades.
All right. Gracias.
Gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Your services, we could always do more on flood control, we could always do better on maintaining roads, sidewalks, I don't have to tell anybody about that. So maintenance costs involved statutorily required costs. For example, the cost of maintaining our jail is going up. That doesn't mean that we're creating new investments in public safety. That just means that in order to maintain the standards required by statute, we have to put more money into the jail. If there are more people in the jail, we need more detention officers because there's a staffing ratio. And so when there are conversations about increased investments in law enforcement or public safety, a lot of that is statutory requirements. But because our debit card is already on overdraft, we are going deeper and deeper into the hole when we have to increase those investments due to statutory requirements. Then remember the fact that we're losing tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funding. So our hospital system, our public hospital system, Harris Health, the reason this is relevant to you even if you have private health insurance and you go to a private hospital is because Harris Health, Ben Taub, is one of only two Level One Trauma Centers. If God forbid you or a loved one ends up in an accident, in an emergency, that's where they take you is Ben Taub, the Level One Trauma Center unless they send you to Memorial Hermann one, but you know, it really is the luck of the draw at that point. So $400 million in Harris Health funding right now in jeopardy because of federal government cuts. That's an enormous amount of money, huge percentage of their budget. We're already overdrafted, so of course we can't find $400 million somewhere to make up for that. Not to mention so many other grants that the county receives across departments, whether it be public health, whether it be our community department that addresses issues like homelessness, whether it be veterans or others, there are grants that we're not sure if we're going to receive or not. And so those are services that we routinely pay for with federal funding that we may not be able to cover. And so either we're cutting them or we're going further, deeper into the hole and the second one really is not an option. Let me give you a specific example. Ryan White Council planning, so Ryan White program was created under President Bush to help serve programs for people living with HIV and AIDS. The first freestanding HIV clinic in the country is the Thomas Street Clinic here in Harris County. It's a point of pride for our community that we have been very thoughtful and effective in serving the community living with HIV and AIDS. It was created in 1990, it has served more than 15,000 individuals in the Houston area just last year. Federal funding will cause people to lose care, potential layoffs, delays in services. We only have a few years of budget left and after that we don't have any more money to fund those programs, so the services will end. Now, the obvious question which I would ask as well, can't you find some efficiencies? Can't you find some cost savings mechanisms? And the answer to that is we have. Over the past few years, we have worked really hard to make county budgeting more efficient, to combine expenses where we can, to bring in people that are going to help us make cost savings possible. And even this year, we are looking at additional cost savings measures. And so today, there are some that are being proposed. And so let me go over what those are, that's this document and we'll pass it to the press later. So it's the one with the longer table. So this is what are being proposed as potential cost saving measures. Some of them, these are this year's measures that's in addition to what we've done in previous years. So as you can see, if we look at additional savings, those are some property sales. That is this pension and healthcare funds contribution, that's a conversation that's going to be had inside about whether to charge employees more for their county provided healthcare. The PIC fund contribution, that's the rainy day fund. So the proposal is to not make an additional contribution to the rainy day fund this year. The contract patrol, so right now Harris County subsidizes the contracts that neighborhoods have with constables in order to provide additional security to their neighborhoods. So the proposal is to reduce that subsidy. The ARPA reallocation, so those are $20 million that will go from one-time federal funding to the general fund. In other words, it's kicking the can down the road. It is saying we're going to take one-time funding to pay for $20 million worth of recurring services. So that one really, I would say, doesn't really count, it's kicking the can down the road, and so on and so forth. So some of those are going to be voted on today. I for one am going to be on the side of austerity. My expectation suspicion is that there will not be majority support for some of these cost savings because of course they're politically difficult. But there seems to be a trend on putting personal political interests above the interests of taxpayers. On the other side, again, you can see some additional strategies for cost saving. And so when you add all of this up though, it still leaves you with around $100 million of outstanding costs. In other words, even after we do all of this, which I don't think we will do all of this today, we are still overdrafted in our debit card by around $100 million. And so the question is, okay, in Harris County, we're not allowed to have an overdrafted debit card. So how are we going to cut $100 million more dollars on top of the fact that we've already been cutting and on top of the fact that we're expecting federal funding to not come through? And so unless we have some sort of magic powers that I don't know exist, we're going to have to cut department funding. And so why are we in this situation? You know, if we're able to do all of this, it's $100 million that we're cutting from departments. You know what cost $100 million? Was the arrow that a majority of court threw at the heart of your county budget. It was a decision several weeks ago to commit to $100 million in law enforcement raises when we had the recommendation from the budget director and the clear understanding that we did not have that money. In other words, the debit card was already on overdraft and then three colleagues decided, counter to the budget director's recommendations, that you know what, we're going to put $100 million more dollars into that. We have no idea how we're going to cover that $100 million. My plea at the time, just as it was last time, was let's go to the voters. Let's not cut $100 million worth of services without asking, hey, would you like to cover those law enforcement pay raises? Or would you like not to, in which case you'll keep all the services? We'll have to cut the services, or we can do both if you vote for it. But of course, the decision was made to not go to the voters, to instead make the unilateral decision to put us $100 million in the hole. To put $100 million into context, that's around how much money it would cost to renovate the Astrodome, okay? So we could take that $100 million that was unilaterally decided to put us in the hole, send it over to the Astrodome, we'd probably stop debating that. And so here's the other thing that I want to make sure you guys know. So there's actually on court today and the last court, on top of that, even more decisions to put us deeper and deeper in the hole. So today, there's a proposal to increase the salaries of county elected constables. They've already received some raises. Of course, I'm not going to be supporting that again on the side of austerity. Last court, there was a decision to pay $5 million more dollars for park security that was already being covered. So that's additional money that we're going deeper and deeper in the hole. So in order to pay the overdraft, we're reducing the main cost area, which is maintenance costs. There's a lot of smoke and mirrors going on, the people of the county are smarter than that. We all manage our budgets, we know that money doesn't grow on trees. If we spend more than we have, we're going to have to cut somewhere. And so let me just show you a little bit about what's happening here. The $200 million in the hole, that's about 9% of our total budget. And then, so how do you cut that? You know, some have said there won't be cuts to library or clinical health hours, maybe. But there's ways that those areas are getting funding cuts again because we have to find these hundreds of millions of dollars. So where else are you going to find them, right? There's a $700,000 cut in current vacancies at the libraries. So those are spots that the libraries were counting on, that they're looking to fill so they can continue programs, that now they're not going to be able to fill. Earlier, there was a statement that early childhood and apprenticeship programs will be continued through the end of the year. We're always going to do that, that's how long the federal funding lasts. So this is nothing, you know, the request last year was to continue that by going to the voters, which of course, we did not have support again to go to the voters. So this is not news, this is just the federal funding running out. Departments like the tax office, the DA's office, the Department of Housing, which again deals with homelessness and related issues, the fire marshal's office instituting, implementing the fire code, those are big ticket items that could face cuts. We're looking at, okay fine, maybe we won't cut some clinics, but you know what we are cutting? Public health equipment, public health trainings, equipment for testing. And so, you know, we've seen it with the federal government. You're cutting things, you're going to see those impacts in services. It's impossible for there to be no impacts when you're cutting $100 million, when you've already instituted cost savings and there's hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funding that is no longer coming. It is impossible. And anybody who says otherwise is trying to pull the wool over your eyes. And so, you know, maybe the clinic doesn't close, but instead of being able to see 25 patients, they see 20. We're seeing cuts to services for women and children, maternal and child health. We're looking at potential cuts to county efforts to train the next generation of the mental health workforce at a point where we have too many people needing mental health services and too few people providing them. As I said, you know, we are contributing less than usual to our rainy day fund. And so, you know, we may say, okay, that's not a big deal because we already have money in the rainy day fund. But remember, this is a year we can't rely on FEMA grants because the federal government has cut FEMA. They have threatened FEMA funding for governments. Certainly politically, the federal government is not aligned with the majority of Harris County and we know a lot of this has become political. And so, you know, fundamentally, what we're looking at here is, you know, what do we do? So what's the answer? Do we fire our accountant? If this were your budget, you realize that your $200 million in the hole, you know, maybe you turn to your accountant, you say, hey, I don't need you anymore. Well, here's the thing, our accountant so to speak is our budget director. Our budget director has advised against all of these commitments that have led to overdraft over the past year or so. Every time there has been an additional request, whether it be additional funding for courts, additional funding for salaries, additional funding for all kinds of things, the budget director has said, we cannot afford it. To the point that he's been ignored so much. Today, he's presenting these proposed offsets, but he's not making any recommendations officially. Our county administrator resigned in the middle of all of this. I mean, why would you want to be leading the county if those folks that are supposed to be listening to your advice routinely ignore it and put you $200 million in the hole? And so it's not that our budget director has not been advising us properly, it's that the buck stops with all of us sitting around the horseshoe. We make decisions, we decide whether or not to follow the budget director's recommendations. And so what I'm hoping my colleagues will do today, and certainly that I will be doing, is number one, to help minimize the damage. In other words, to follow these proposals by the budget director. And number two, at the very least, to not make things worse, to stop the bleeding, to not commit to giving more money. If they commit to continuing to subsidize the contract program, if they commit to increasing salaries for constables, that's continuing the bleeding. That is exacerbating the issue. And so, you know, here, this table illustrates the issue we're in. So we are projecting $133 million deficit. Then we had better than expected projections in terms of the county's financial standing, so it was going to be $108 million. Then the colleagues committed to $142 million in unfunded raises for law enforcement. That was money that we all knew we did not have. Two of us said, hey, let's ask the voters if they want to pay this amount of money because we do not have it. We're at zero, in fact, we were already in the negatives. You know, we negotiated for months, now the cost of this unfunded raise is going to be $101 million. $100 million is a lot of money. And so in total, our deficit, you know, the debit card that's on overdraft, it's $209 million. We've overdrafted by $209 million. That's more than the county budget for a lot of counties in Texas, let me just tell you that. And so there are some offsets that are being proposed. Even if we were to do all of that, which I'm not sure my colleagues will support, we're still going to have close to $100 million that we have to cut from departments. And so, you know, again, unless my colleagues can make money grow on trees, yes, there will be cuts to basic services because we've already streamlined everything there is. And so, you know, the purpose of local government is to be agile, to be fully functional when you need it to be. And these cuts are going to hinder our ability to be responsive. So today, I'm going to be voting on the side of austerity. But most importantly, I encourage the public to get informed. So today, the decision is on whether or not to support these cost-saving measures that the county budget director is proposing. Then there's going to be a meeting coming up later in early September where we're going to set the budget, so all the cuts are going to be firmed up at that meeting. And then there's going to be ultimately the decision on the tax rate for each of the entities. But remember, our hands are tied because colleagues decided not to go to the voters on this $108 million increase for law enforcement that we couldn't afford, that I fully support this pay increase, but if we can't afford it, we can't afford it, okay? And then there is the, of course, early childhood program, which they also decided not to go to the voters with. So to me, very important to be aware of this, okay? Not only are elected leaders putting your county in the hole, but they are refusing to ask you whether you would like to pay to make up for this money or whether you would like to see cuts. We are forcing you to have cuts, public health, pollution control, you know, homelessness, maternal health, you name it. So let me leave it at that and I'm going to repeat here in Spanish. Okay, so, and then I'll take some questions. Um, okay, so, and then I'll take some questions. Bueno, hemos estado trabajando en el presupuesto del condado Harris y hoy día vamos a considerar ciertas propuestas de compensación para poder nivelar el, el presupuesto que existe en este momento. Hoy día hay muchos costos, muchos compromisos del presupuesto que no han sido financiados. Eh, específicamente, el, el condado maneja costos de mantenimiento para tantos servicios que ofrecemos y con todo eso yo sé que hay limitaciones en cuanto a la calidad de los servicios. Por ejemplo, yo sé que se necesitan mejores aceras, yo sé que se necesitan mejores calles, eh, que hay que mantener mejor la calidad de nuestra infraestructura de manejo de inundaciones, etcétera. Pero solamente hay suficiente, hay, hay tanto dinero y con ese dinero pues hacemos lo que podemos. Entonces, el costo de mantener los servicios al nivel en que existen es un costo constante. Pero recordemos una cosa, que el gobierno federal ha estado cortando fondos, eh, drásticamente. Por ejemplo, el sistema de hospitales público Harris Health está, eh, proyectando cuatrocientos millones de dólares en recortes por, eh, fondos federales que ya no van a llegar. Ese sistema de hospitales públicos es importante para usted aunque usted tenga, eh, seguro, aseguranza privada. Por qué? Porque si Dios lo, Dios no quiera está usted en un accidente de tránsito, en una emergencia, lo llevan al centro de emergencias en Ventab. El centro de emergencias de nuestro sistema de hospitales públicos es uno de solo dos sistemas, eh, centros de emergencia nivel uno en nuestro condado y en nuestra región. Entonces, eh, encima de eso hay más programas, eh, bien sea en temas de salud pública, bien sea en temas de personas sin hogar. Eh, casi que en todos nuestros departamentos hay programas que mantenemos año tras año con fondos federales que ya no llegarán. Específicamente, eh, fondos, por ejemplo, para el VIH y SIDA. Es un programa creado por el presidente Bush en mil novecientos noventa. Eh, quince mil individuos viviendo con SIDA y VIH, eh, utilizan esos servicios año tras año. Sabemos que esos fondos se van a acabar, que no vamos a recibir más fondos federales. Entonces, ¿qué va a suceder con todos esos individuos? Es una, eh, un ejemplo concreto. Bueno, entonces la pregunta es, ¿y eficiencias? ¿Ya han analizado eficiencias? ¿Ya han analizado reestructurar los departamentos? Ahorros de cor- de costos, ¿qué se ha hecho? Bueno, hemos trabajado en eso durante los últimos seis años, pero además hoy día se proponen más estrategias para ahorrar fondos. Son todas estas dos páginas de estrategias. El problema es que hay, hay ciertas estrategias, estrategias que me imagino mis colegas no van a apoyar. Por ejemplo, eh, ajustar el, el sistema de aseguranza para los empleados del condado. O sea, que los empleados tengan que pagar un poquito más por la seguridad. No creo que, que, que se apoye eso. Eh, reducir el subsidio de contratos, eh, de, de adicionales que ciertos vecindarios tienen con, eh, policías para ofrecer seguridad adicional. Imaginaría que el vecindario debería pagar por eso, pero la realidad es que el condado ofrece un subsidio. Entonces, acabar con esos subsidios es otra idea, eh, que no creo que, que suceda, pero ya veremos. Eh, una idea preocupante es no suba, no sumarle fondos a nuestro fondo de emergencia. Es el fondo que utilizamos cuando hay huracanes. En este momento tenemos alrededor de ciento ochenta millones de dólares en ese fondo de emergencia. Okay, bueno, podríamos decir que eso es suficiente, pero ese es el problema. En general, tenemos más de eso. Pero hay que recordar también que el gobierno federal ha estado amenazando enviar fondos como normalmente hacen a través de FEMA, de la Organización de Emergencias. Entonces, este no es el año para no contribuir al fondo de emergencias por, por si hubiera un huracán o dos. Eh, lo otro que quiero explicar es, eh, bueno, ¿por qué están diciendo ciertas personas que no habría, que no habrán recortes? Eso es, eh, simplemente, no es, no es la, no es la realidad. Aunque hagamos todos estos, todos estos recortes, el condado aún, eh, queda en un déficit de cien millones de dólares. Cien millones de dólares es el presupuesto de muchos condados. Eh, cien millones de dólares, eh, puede ser lo que cuesta renovar, eh, un estadio. Entonces, ¿de dónde vamos a sacar cien millones de dólares si tenemos una tarjeta de débito en donde estamos en los negativos, negativo cien millones? Entonces, hay personas que dicen, bueno, no van a haber recortes de salud pública, no van a recortes de tal cosa. La realidad es que sí los van a ver. Puede que las clínicas no se cierren, pero van a haber menos pacientes. Puede que no se despidan, eh, empleados de la clínica, pero sí van a ver, va a haber menos entrenamiento, menos equipo. Eh, van a haber recortes en otros departamentos. Eh, ya han habido despidos de personal. Entonces, eh, obviamente van a haber impactos porque de dónde más se sacan cien millones de dólares. Lo siguiente que uno diría, bueno, ¿por qué no despedimos a el director de presupuesto? ¿Cómo nos permite él estar en un déficit de cien millones de dólares? O sea, hay que contratar a alguien distinto. Bueno, la verdad no se le puede echar la culpa a él porque el director de presupuesto nos ha dicho durante los últimos año o dos años que no nos alcanza el dinero para pagar por todo esto que los colegas se han comprometido a pagar. Específicamente, han habido compromisos de incrementos de salarios, eh, incrementos a ciertos departamentos. Y, pero el más grande fue un compromiso de subirle el salario a los policías en un monto que llega siendo más de cien millones de dólares. Miren, yo creo también en tener policías bien pagados. Es, es una profesión muy importante donde necesitamos los profesionales, eh, más equipados. Pero si no hay dinero, no hay dinero. Entonces, cuando hubo la propuesta de subir el salario por cien millones de dólares, dijimos, mire, el director del condado dice que no nos alcanza, que estamos ya en, en, en negativos. ¿Por qué no le preguntamos a los votantes si quieren ver esos cien millones de dólares o si prefieren que recortemos los servicios básicos? No hubo apoyo en la corte de ir y preguntarle a ustedes los votantes. Entonces, ahora estamos forzando estos recortes masivos. Eh, les quiero explicar, eh, mi estrategia hoy día y lo que espero que hagan mis colegas también. Uno es minimizar el daño, o sea, seguir las recomendaciones del director del, de el presupuesto para poder ahorrar, eh, unos fondos. Número dos, no empeorar las cosas, no hacer más daños. Hay dos propuestas el día de hoy, eh, subir el salario a, a, a ciertos otros policías. Eh, ayer, la semana pasada, se subió los fondos que se invierten en los parques. O sea, estamos ya en negativo, doscientos millones. ¿Cómo vamos a seguir gastando fondos que no tenemos? Espero que los colegas no hagan eso. El, como, como he dicho, bueno, eh, hay muchos retos. Puede que algunas personas digan que no van a haber despidos, que, que, que vamos a ver cómo se soluciona esto, que tenemos fondos que no tenemos. La realidad es, estamos a un negativo doscientos millones y, eh, aún, si, si, aprobamos todo hoy, aún van a haber cien millones de dólares de recortes. Entonces, eso era los, lo que les quería explicar. Hoy día vamos a hablar de estos, de estos potenciales soluciones para ahorrar, eh, alrededor de cien millones de dólares. Aún faltan otros cien. Y en las semanas que vienen, se van a aprobar los recortes a los varios departamentos y también, eh, la tasa de impuestos para los, eh, residentes del condado Harris. Entonces, lo dejo ahí, seguiré velando por la transparencia y la responsabilidad financiera del condado ya que es un deber importante como juez del condado, tanto manejar las emergencias como manejar el presupuesto. Eh, I'll take some questions now.
Judge, why should taxpayers trust Commissioner's Court? You're saying that, and your colleagues are saying that.
I think, you know, people should look at the numbers, right? And, um, and look at the past meetings of Commissioner's Court. It's clear as day. You can see the recommendations that the budget director has made over the past few meetings of court. And I'll have my staff pull it. And you can see that he says, we cannot afford it. And three people around the horseshoe vote for it anyway. And, uh, you can see that two of us propose, let's ask the voters before we make cuts. And three of us say, no, let's just make the cuts. So that's just what it is. If I had put the budget in the hole, if I had put taxpayers in this untenable situation and disenfranchise them, I might also try to obfuscate a little bit. You can understand that. But the fact of the matter is, uh, it's dollars and cents. You'll hear it from the budget director today. We have two hundred million dollars that we have to make up for. That is a fact. The federal government is cutting grants. That is a fact. You, we all know that. The federal government is attacking FEMA. That is a fact. Um, and then we know also that there, there has not been any effort to go to the voters to ask to cover these costs. That is also a fact. So I'd like to see them show, show me where they're growing money on trees. Other than that, I'm not asking for any leap of faith in explaining the facts. I'm simply walking people through the numbers.
And your colleagues suggest that situations aren't as dire as you're just saying that they've looked at the last few months ways to make small cuts, or fishing, fishing for rapids. But if vacancies, they say that they're feeling, they say they have to be treated with a favor.
But, you know, that may be for, for a few, a few vacancies, but certainly, uh, not most of them. And again, you know, I think that they listed maybe one to two million dollars worth of savings if you add up the departments they mentioned. We have two hundred million dollars worth of savings we have to make. And so, um, I, I, I mean, you can listen to the budget director, you can look at the numbers, or you can listen to the folks that have been cutting, eh, that have been committing money that we literally don't have and have refused continuously to go to the voters, instead, um, trying to, uh, obfuscate by pointing to other issues. And so, you know, when they say there's gonna be no impacts to clinics, that's categorically false. Um, when they say there's not gonna be impacts in terms of, um, firings, that's categorically false. There are departments that already have made layoffs in preparation for the budget season. So, uh, you know, if they can explain to you guys how it is that they're saving the two hundred million, where the plant is that grows money i- on it, you know, um, color me surprised. All right, thank you so much.
I was gonna ask, it's been a week since the Pity Tax vote. How are you feeling about all of that? Do you worry that someone, uh, coverage of that in the centurions, there's a best program in January?
The program, eh, was killed already by my colleagues, you know, so that's another one. But, yeah, I mean, that, that's, um, we had an opportunity to continue. Childcare, the majority, vast majority of voters, two-thirds of voters wanted an opportunity to vote on that. Uh, and, and again, you know, who are we gonna trust, the folks that don't trust you to make a decision? Or the folks that are trying to fight for children? I don't even have children. I mean, it just, it's, uh, it's, it's the future. So anyway, um, let me, let, and, uh, yeah, so anyway, let me leave it at that. Today, I think the focus is the budget. Um, but again, both the childcare program and the apprenticeship training program are ending next year. That was the plan. That's not, you know, they're not extending it to next year. So here's an example of how they're twisting the facts. And that's just, uh, to me, i- it's not gonna happen without me trying to clarify for the public what's taking place. Because ultimately, um, the way I look at myself in the mirror is by knowing that I'm telling the truth and that I'm not putting my political interest before anything else. It'd be very easy for me to say yes to everything. I mean, that's a lovely thing to do. Yes, increase salary increases. Yes, um, more pay for these. Yes, m- more services here, more money for parks. Everybody loves to say yes, but as elected officials, we have to be able to say no sometimes because otherwise, we can't fulfill our budget. It's as simple as that. All right, thank you.